The council president sitting in. Marlo, would you call roll?
Charlie Davidson. George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Charles Swankie.
Here.
Terry Osborne.
Here.
Troy Hill.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Council President, you have a quorum.
Leading us in the invocation tonight is Bill Coons.
Let's pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Father, it is my prayer that the city council of the city of Park City will do their due diligence, that they will work and do the work that you have given them to do, that the council members will acknowledge your supremacy in all things, that they will seek to do your will in all things pertaining to the business of the city of Park City. Father, bless the council as they seek and try to do what is best for the good people of Park City. In Jesus' name, so shall it be. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Ben.
Mr. Council President, I have a question real quick on this, on the consent agenda number three. Is that August or September financials?
September.
September, okay. Do we change that here at the agenda or do we change this part of the consent agenda, I guess? Or does it matter when we change it? Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda with item number three under the consent agenda being changed to September, not August.
Great catch. Troy.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. For awards and presentations, we have the first responders proclamation, which I understand is Marlo tonight.
Whereas first responders, including public works professionals, police officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, paramedics, and other emergency personnel stand on the front lines of our communities selflessly serving and protecting the citizens of the city of Park City in times of crisis. And whereas first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Park City to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and other first responder efforts in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the sixth annual National First Responders Day sponsored by bipartisan resolutions in the U.S. Senate and House. Now, therefore, the city of Park City does hereby designate October 28, 2024, as National First Responders Day and urges all citizens to join in paying tribute to our public works and law enforcement officers and our local firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, and other emergency personnel to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Marlo. We definitely appreciate their time and commitment to our community and to everyone's. Move on to staff reports. Sean.
Good evening, Council President and Council. Just a couple of public works project updates going on around the city. First is a water meter replacement program. The third and final tower has been installed and is operational, which will allow the rollout of the customer portal very soon. The contractor has two crews on site this week and then staff is working with the crews to help complete the remaining approximate 500 installations. Of the 500 remaining meters, 300 still will require follow-up work to be completed by city staff. Next is the hydraulic water line project. Work is moving along quickly with the project. The contractor has installed the majority of the new 16-inch line, but will wait until November 2nd for an official connection to the system to lessen the impact to surrounding businesses. Crews have also begun to shape and form the sidewalks along hydraulic in conjunction with the water line. As far as the 2024 street rehab project, work began on removal of the two sets of abandoned railroad tracks running through Broadway Avenue prior to the two-inch Mill and Overlay set to occur within the next 30 days. Prior to the Mill and Overlay, the old Lawrence Road intersections transition will be removed and reconstructed with concrete where the approach meets Broadway. Phase two, the additional rehab projects approved by council are currently out for bid with a bid opening scheduled for tomorrow, and then that will be brought to the council on November 12th on your agenda for council approval. As far as Park Center, all the curb and gutters for Milestone One have been installed, as well as the valley gutters poured throughout most of the development. Beaumont Street and Hebert Drive are slated to be poured and completed with other milestone deliverables by November 15th. Approximately 90% of the entire pipe work, which includes water, wastewater, stormwater for Park Center, has been installed. All remaining deliverables are due next summer, approximately somewhere around the beginning of June. Finally, also, there has been some confusion throughout the city on this, so I asked Gina to provide an update on get the lead out. In conjunction with the lead service line inventory requirements, the EPA and KDHE are requiring cities to notify water system users of the health effects of lead service lines. A trifle publication that is specifically named notification of known or potential service line containing lead will be sent out to all the households that have either indicated, one, that they have lead pipes, that they have galvanized pipes, that their material pipe was unknown, or they have not yet submitted a response to the survey requesting line material information. Notifications will be being mailed out soon and are required to be dispersed no later than November 16th. And finally, as far as upcoming calendar events, the Community Relations Board Fall Festival is coming up this Saturday, October 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon at Hat McLean Park. They'll have a costume contest, pony rides, a bonfire, smores, pumpkin decorations, a money dive, and kid games. Everyone is encouraged to come out and join the celebration. And then, starting next week here at City Hall, we have early voting from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 2nd. Then, of course, Election Day is two weeks from today, on November 5th, and that will occur here at City Hall, as well as the Word of Life Church, and that is from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. People can go to the city's website page to view both the city precinct map, as well as which polling place they're supposed to go to. And that's all I have tonight, sir.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Anybody have any questions? We will move on to the consent agenda as amended. I would entertain a motion. That's... Ben.
Yeah, I'd move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
And Terry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moves seven zero. New business, discuss and consider a resolution authorizing the construction of a new senior center. Sean.
Yes, sir. Charter ordinance C-39-2019 provides that the city may file with the governing body a multi-year capital improvement plan for the development of the city, including public improvements, acquisition of necessary land, acquisition of equipment, vehicles, or other personal property to be used. In May 2021, the council approved such resolution, number 1069-2021, authorizing and providing for payment of costs for certain improvements within the CIP. Upon approval of the CIP, the city is authorized to issue its general obligation bonds in an amount sufficient to carry out such plan and associated cost, and by resolution, self-specify the amount and the purpose of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds to be issued. The resolution before you tonight will serve as the initial authorization for the construction of the new senior center with an estimated cost of $5,277,960. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions or discussion? Ben.
Yeah, I want to say thank you to staff. We have... After last week, I know we had some heated discussion at different times over the use or ability of usage for this facility, and getting a good, clear answer now is helpful. So I would be in favor of moving forward all the way around, whether it's the application of grant that leads to the funding or an aspect of the funding, and then the construction as a whole. So I would move to approve Resolution 1226-2024, a resolution amending and supplementing Resolutions Number 1069-2021 and 1081-2021, which authorize and provide for payment of the cost of certain improvements included in the multi-year capital improvement plan for the city of Park City, Kansas.
Okay. Troy?
I second.
Would you second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Do you have anything, Charles?
No, I was going to second it.
Okay. I don't really have anything to add either. It's great to see this project moving forward. I've had a lot of positive discussion and comments, so... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. So we are on our way. Item number five, discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability in making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings. And this is for streetscape, Park Center. Sean.
Yes, sir. The attached petition was filed with the city clerk proposing improvements to Park Center streetscape. The petition was signed by the owners of records of more than one-half of the area liable for the assessment of the proposed improvements, and therefore, the petitioners are requesting such improvements be made without notice and hearing as required by KSA 12-6A01. The improvements include construction of streetscape improvements along the following streets with other pedestrian enhancements within reserves B, D, and F. Stewart Drive from Longmont to the north side of Beaumont, from Longmont from south side of Beaumont Street to the south side of Stewart Drive, and the north side of Stewart Drive to the north side of Berquist Drive, Beaumont Street from the east side of Longmont to east side of the platte, Newport Street from the north side of Beaumont Street to the south side of Berquist Drive, and then Berquist Drive from the east side of Longmont to the west side of Hebert Drive, including the roundabout. The improvements shall be constructed in accordance with city standards, plans, specifications, as approved by the city engineer. The estimated probable cost of the proposed improvements is $1.557 million, with the estimated cost increasing on a prorata rate of 1% per month. The improvement district to be assessed for the costs is lots 3 and 4 Block A, lots 2 and 4 Block B, lots 1 through 11 Block C, lots 1 and 2 Block D, lots 1 through 12 on Block E, Lot 1 on Block F, lots 1 through 5 on Block G, lots 1 through 5 on Block H, and Lot 1 Block I, and Lot 1 Block J, all of the Park Center addition to the city of Park City, Sedgwick County. The method of assessment is equally per square footage, with the apportionment of the improved district being 80% against the improvement district and 20% to be paid by the city.
Could we define streetscapes somewhat?
Streetscapes are everything that's going to make it look wonderful. You've got water, sewers, streets, paving, stormwater drainage, all that. This would be additional sidewalks, features, benches, bike racks. Street lighting is an awful big one for Park Center, because normally, we have Evergy come out, they put forth a plan, they put up regular wooden telephone poles, and they go about their business, and they're responsible for putting up streetlights, and we just pay the normal monthly cost on each streetlight. This one here, all of Park Center will have a central theme. The streetlights are very modern-looking with the arms on the side for banners and everything along that line. It is also taking into consideration in Reserve F, which is in the very lower right-hand corner, the southeast corner, that would be the one part that is owned and operated and owned, operated, and maintained by the city. But there's a pedestrian bridge, and there's a sidewalk trail that goes all the way around the pond. But there's a pedestrian bridge that goes over the northeast corner of that as well. So that's in the estimate, I think, to the tune of somewhere around $100,000 for that pedestrian bridge. But it's everything else that makes Park Center. Signage goes into that, of course, because there will be a central theme for signage throughout the addition.
Okay. That's what I was curious about there. And it's... And just as a reminder, you know, the cities were paying for 20% of this, and the developer and the future owners would pay for the other 80%, so...
Yes.
I don't have any other questions. So Ben.
Yeah, so just because the next one is very similar, but...
Seventy thirty.
And what's the difference in what's being?
Reserve B is the small little reserve at the very south end of the roundabout. And I was going to mention that on the next one. Every street or every petition that we have done on Park Center to date has been an 80/20 split. And that was originally derived because Reserve D, which is the larger park area on this, right next to the farmer's market, where that's been proposed, as well as Reserve F, that makes up 20% of the area. And so that's why it was agreed upon with the developer, 80/20 split. Reserve B was originally going to be listed as private streets, and the developer was going to be responsible for that. But when it comes to snow clearance, the streets, making certain that there were adequate, they were going to make them a little bit more narrow than what the city standards would allow and everything. We went ahead and that's the next one. But Reserve B is that one specifically. And so by taking that and adding it to the other two reserves, the city's portion is now 30% of the land rather than 20% of the land. So that's on the next one. But this one here was the original streetscape. That's what was originally put forth a long time ago, and so it's on an 80/20 split.
Okay. And to just... So like on where Reserve B is at on there, right next to it has the letter D circled.
Reserve D is to the south.
Well, no, I mean, it'd be to the...
This is a D.
What we're doing.
There, is that?
Five.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, which areas are Reserve...
The reserves are the white ones.
Right.
Okay. Okay, perfect. I think I...
That is Block D is what you're looking at.
Perfect.
That is not Reserve D.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If anyone has any questions, now's the time. Otherwise, I don't see any others, so I would entertain a motion. Read her off. Ben.
Let's get her done. Make a motion to approve Resolution 1227-2024, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to letter of credit.
And Troy?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That is approved seven zero. We are moving on to item six, which is to discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings. This is for Reserve B, Park Center addition.
Yes, sir. Again, the attached petition filed with the city clerk, more than one-half. No public hearing required. The improvements include the construction of pavement and pedestrian improvements within Reserve B, with drainage to be installed when necessary. The improvements constructed and according to city standards and plans approved by the city engineer. The estimated probable cost of proposed improvements is $1.121 million, with, again, on a prorata rate, increase of 1% from the adoption of the resolution. The improvement district to be assessed for the cost is the exact same properties as listed in the previous one. Equally done per square footage, and the apportionment on this one, though, is 70% assessed against the improvement district and 30% against the city. Stand for any questions.
Any questions and/or a motion? Ben.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1228-2024.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Troy? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That moves seven zero. Are you trying to buzz in, Troy? Yeah, I could hear it clicking. It's not coming through. That moves us on to item number seven, which is to discuss and consider approving a resolution for the application, operations, and maintenance of improvements for a new senior center. This is Sean.
Yes, sir. The city is applying for a community development block grant through the Department of Commerce for funds to assist in constructing the new senior center. Attached are actually two resolutions. The first one is authorizing the council president to submit the application, and the second is to attest that the city has sufficient funds to provide for the continued operations and the maintenance. This is relatively straightforward, required as part of the application. And as Councilmember Sausetta said, there is a current copy of the new policy that was put out by the Department of Commerce earlier today because of a question that came up during our public hearing at the last meeting. Whereas the company that is helping us with the application process said that it was limited if you wanted to go for a CDB block grant, that the senior center could only be used for a senior center. But according to the new policy statement, it can be rented out. The primary function of the building will still be as a senior center. But then the only other caveat that they put on it is any funds that the city receives from renting it out for other such purposes all has to go back into the maintenance and operations of the senior center, which is perfectly fine with the city. So it was a technical question, but this is from the director of the Small City CBD G block program with the Department of Commerce. So this is the official word going forward.
That's great news.
Yes. So again, the effort is, or the hope is, that we can secure the maximum amount of the grant, which would be $800,000 to help offset a portion of the cost.
Any questions? Discussion? Terry.
I don't have any questions, and I appreciate the clarification from the powers that be there. That helped a great deal. I would move to approve Resolution 1229-2024, a resolution authorizing council president to submit a CDBG application. And Resolution 1230-2024, a resolution attesting the city with sufficient funds to provide for continued operation and maintenance of the new senior center.
And Brandy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion. Call a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passes seven zero.
And sir, if I can, before we get to the next one, I just want to mention Maddie, because she's the one who did the lion's share as far as working out with the Department of Commerce, spending hours on the phone with them to get it all clarified and make certain that we had everything in writing. So anyway, just wanted to say thanks, Maddie.
Great job.
Great work.
Good. Everybody that's watching this on video should see how big Maddie is smiling back there and how much she's in support of this.
That's every day, though. Every day, she's always got a smile on, so...
That was good detective work, so thank you. So that moves us on to item eight, which is to discuss and consider amending Sections 15-218 of the municipal code related to disconnection charges. And Marlo.
Once a month, the city has a task of reviewing customer accounts for non-payment. A disconnect list is generated of all accounts that have not paid their bill. A disconnection fee is automatically applied to all accounts on the list. Public Works receives the disconnect list by 8:00 a.m. on the morning it is generated so that they can begin disconnecting the delinquent accounts. There have been instances where customers have paid their delinquent bill before Public Works shuts their water off. The proposed amendment would require the customers on the disconnect list to pay the disconnection fee even if their water is not actually turned off yet. This fee covers the costs associated with generating the list, disconnecting service, and other related processes. Staff recommends approval. You have any questions?
And this kind of comes about because we're already spending some time and money on the process, but due to the semantics of this, you don't get paid until... So we're spending some money without being reimbursed.
Correct. Yeah. Today was disconnect day. We had 40 people on the list. We did have one person come in before her water is actually disconnected, and we just want to be able to recoup the costs.
Yeah, I think that's the important thing.
Because once the list goes out, it's done. There's no calling Public Works saying, hey, this person paid. Don't shut them off. That, we don't do that.
And it's not the message. The message is that we're not trying to make money off of this.
Right.
We're spending time and resources on this.
Yes.
Brandy.
How much time are we spending on this? Because I guess I see it as a list. We have a utility software. And can we not just run a list of unpaid bills in a matter of a couple of minutes and have a list of who still owes?
So the bills are due on the 15th. We make a call on the 16th, letting the customers know they have so many days to pay their bill. We do make another call prior to disconnect day, telling them, you need to pay by 5:00 o'clock. It was yesterday. They come in and they have to collect all the payments, credit card payments, post them, all the payments that were in the drop box, post them. Then they can generate the list, and then we have to send it to Public Works. They head out and start disconnecting. Like I said, once the list is sent out, there's no calling Public Works saying, don't turn them off. Don't turn them off. It's just their process. They've got to go through it. Once they pay, then we'll... This also generates a service order as well.
I guess for me, I don't agree with this. I think if you're not disconnected, you shouldn't have to pay that disconnect fee. I mean, I think you should pay the disconnect fee if you do get disconnected, but if it's still not been put out there yet, I don't think you should have to pay the fee. So I feel like that this is, that we're a utility provider, and so I feel like that some of these tasks that we're saying we want reimbursed for is already part of the job. And that's kind of where I have a disagree, because I don't feel like it's... It's not... I don't... I guess I don't know how to say. I just don't feel like it's the additional work being added. It's... To me, it's part of the job as being that utility clerk, and this is just another step in the process.
Also, I do want to say that I did pose the question on listserv for the other city clerks in this state. I had 18 responses. Out of the 18 responses, 17 of those cities said, we apply the fee no matter what. There's no going back. It's a done deal. One city, which was pretty small, they did allow for somebody to call them and say, don't disconnect them, so... Once the list is generated, the fee goes on. The software automatically assesses the fee. So if we don't pass this, then she has to turn around and remove it.
Well, then I feel like then maybe we need to change the name of the fee, because it's really not a disconnect fee. So I hate to tell a customer, you're paying a disconnect fee. Well, I didn't get disconnected. So I mean, that's confusion there, so maybe the wording of this fee needs to be changed from disconnect. Or maybe that fee's reduced until you're actually disconnected. Then it's the $75 fee.
We could change it to a non-payment fee to say non-payment instead of disconnect. I think that's what...
I don't know. I just don't like the way this is worded and put out there. I just, I don't agree with that. I just, I don't, I don't agree with it. Anyways, that's just my thought, I'm, I'm just one member of this council.
Ben?
Yeah, I do have a question then kind of as related to what was said there. Do we assess a late fee on the 16th?
Yes.
Okay.
They get a 10% penalty if you haven't paid your bill by the 15th, you get a 10% penalty.
And then, then what date is it? Is it arbitrary as to what day a list gets generated or is it seven days? What's that?
It's between five and seven days. It depends on what day of the month we, the 15th lands on.
Okay. But there's, so like in this case, today was, is Tuesday, right? So seven, was it seven days and today's the 22nd, so that's seven days, but we didn't have any business, it didn't fall on a weekend, so when would it be five days? But, or when would it be a five day if this is seven days later and no week, didn't fall on a weekend? Like usually it goes longer if that date, that fifth day was a Saturday, then it would be extended to that Monday, which would make it seven days, but this case.
To this morning. We take payments clear through this morning. I mean, when she gets here at 7 o'clock, she pulls down the credit card payment, she checks the box, the girls post all the payments as fast as they can so they can generate that list and get it to Public Works at 8 o'clock.
So I, I guess my question is, why, why wasn't it yesterday? If it's supposed to be closer to five days or like, I'm just trying to find out, what's the rhyme or reason to when this disconnect list is pulled and ran?
Well, the fifth day would have been.
Sunday.
The fifth day would have been a Sunday, we're not open, so yesterday and then you go all the way to 5 o'clock to allow them to pay it.
So it's six days?
It does, it, it depends on when the 15th falls. We don't disconnect on a Friday, so it all depends on when the fifth day falls, I mean the 14th, 15th falls.
So I guess my, my, the way I still see it is that there's still some ambiguity in this, is, is it's, it, we don't do it on a Friday, so it won't be on a Friday, but if it's, this fifth day is on a, on a, at the close of business day, fifth day, then the sixth day we run the list, but in the event, when it's not a fifth day, when the fifth day ends on a weekend, then it's the end of the sixth day business day and then seventh and whatever. I could see how it could be very confusing to know which one. Now granted, the point being is you should still, you should still pay your bills. I get that. I get that. Now, if we're assessing a 10% fee though, some of that work, there, there's nothing on the 16th that automatically incurs additional, much additional work on staff when we assess that 10% fee, is that correct? Other than a phone call?
Yeah, they just assess the penalties and then they send out the phone call, letting them know when the last day to pay is.
Because I tend to agree with Councilwoman Bailey that if there's a fee, maybe it's a 20% fee that covers it up until the time that that piece is generated where we're going to actually disconnect them. But if they're not truly disconnected, then having a $70 fee on top of the 10% late fee.
So if we told them that they had till 5 o'clock on Monday night to pay and they come in on Tuesday at 8?
Yeah, as long, I think as long as there's something specific set in stone, like I know that on the fifth day, I have until five days, at the end of the fifth business day, I'm going to get, I'm getting my disconnect. And.
That would have been 5 o'clock yesterday afternoon.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
And that's what the call states. It tells them specifically.
Does the bill state that as well? I guess I don't pay my, I don't watch my bill, I just have it auto debited, so I don't pay enough attention on that piece. Does the bill state that as well as like at the end of five business days, you'll be disconnected or?
I believe it's maybe says five to 10, five to seven business days because of weekends, depends on.
And, and I would say the one thing, I'm not the expert on this, but I appreciate the comment about ambiguity, but there's a listing right there and we put that out that for the whole entire year, the disconnect days are calculated well in advance. It's not a matter of, hey, this just happens to be October, let's go ahead and pick this one and this is what we're going to do now. There's a listing because we've had to explain this to people on, on a regular basis that, hey, look, it's due by the 15th, you have this much time depending on the days of the week and when it falls due, so we have a listing right there at the front desk of all the disconnect days for all of 2024.
Okay.
So it's not ambiguous.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that makes sense if there's something published that states something where there's, there's enough notice in.
Plus they get two calls.
Yeah. Yeah, and phone calls, I think unfortunately don't, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. The other question though, I would find actually interesting just because obviously we're talking, is what are the number of people who actually do pay in that, that one little tiny gap between the morning of and the actual disconnect?
Today, we only had one that I know of. Probably it varies between three and five.
Okay, and then with the new water meter systems, aren't we able to do shut offs? A little bit easier?
They will have, still be done manually. We can't do them.
Okay. It's just the water reeds, that's right.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I, I do tend to kind of agree that maybe setting up something that's just a little bit clear on that, but, but at the same point, if, if there's something that states very clearly that people have, if on October 5th, if on my October 1st bill that I get or October 29th bill for this November 15th, if it has on there failure to pay by just November 21st will result in disconnect fee, then that makes it a little easier when it's stated on the bill. So I get both sides of it there, I think just something that, that is clear is helpful. And whether it's easier than at that point, if we're saying, the other thing is if we're saying at 5 o'clock Monday, for instance, last night, anything at 5 o'clock, then aren't we kind of giving people that come after 5 o'clock the benefit of not of, of, if we say you're shut off at 5 o'clock Monday night, who if you haven't paid, you're getting disconnected and you're getting that, that payment. But they come at 8 and we, 8:00 PM, but we don't, we give them till that we check the mail the next day, then we're really giving them until the beginning of business day, the next day to pay it. Wouldn't that be correct?
Some of them, yes.
Okay.
We do.
Yeah, well, so when you get, when they get a disconnect notice and you shut the water off, how long does it take for the city, once they pay it, to turn it back on, Marlo?
So the disconnect list goes out at 8 o'clock. Anybody who plays after that and by 11.
By 11?
They will get reconnected on that afternoon. If you come after that, the service orders don't go out until 3, 3:30 I believe in the afternoon.
It's the same day?
They would have to wait till the next day.
Next day?
So if you don't come in before 11, the day of disconnect day is going to be the next day. I believe we do allow for an extra batch of service orders to go out at 12:30 on disconnect day only, because normally they go at 11 and 3:30.
So that water meter app that are, that's at each residence that they, they can pull up and see that it's back on, on the meters?
Can the customer see that it's on?
If you tell them it's going to be 3:45 or 4:45, can they look on the app and say it's been turned on or you guys come out and tell them or what?
We make them sign a waiver stating that we can turn it on without them there because there's so many instances where they say, I'm going to be there and they're not and they don't get turned back on, so it would probably be more helpful for them to just turn their water on to see if it was on.
Okay, thank you.
My thought is, I mean, these, these charges are always tough. I mean, no one wants to put a charge on somebody when they're down, but boy, the thing you got to think about is that charges are, I mean, the costs are fixed. I mean, when we spend money on an employee's salary or the technology to track this, I mean, that's a fixed cost. And you just told us that there's three to five a month out of thousands? So that's a very small percentage of people and when, when they cause that, that, that cost has to be paid, we got to pay it. So you're, you're asking the other thousands of your neighbors to pay for something you, you caused. And that's kind of the ugly reality of this. This isn't beating on somebody when they're down, it's, you got to protect the vast majority of the people that are paying for stuff that they didn't cause. So that's a little bit where my mind is and I really respect the thoughts out here and that's why we have a council and can vote on this, but that was really all I had to add, so. I don't see any other discussion except for Terry?
Yep. That just buzzed in. You know, I, I too, similar to, and you know, I, I don't read the fine print on my, on my bill, so I can't speak to the exact, the exact wording because it's, it's auto debited, but I do believe that, you know, we know the specific dates each month and those disconnect dates are. That should be those, not just five business days, you know, should not, you know, we shouldn't print it on the, the bill as five business days, that type of thing after the 15th. It should be each month, it should be that specific date of what that disconnect date is for November 47th, January 3rd. So take the, take that.
She's already done yet.
You know.
She's already figured out what days are for 2025, so.
Right, right, yeah. So, so we, you know, we should be able to, you know, to, to put those specific dates in there to help spell it out even better.
Seeing no other discussion? Sean?
If, if I can, because I think what the ordinance is trying to do is just to clear up something that's already in effect. It's not something that's so much new. And the reason why I say that is, and again, thank you, Maddie. Everybody that comes in to get service and everything, we hand them a new utility packet, here's what's going on in the city, all that good information. Payment deadlines, to avoid disconnection, all payments must be made before 5 o'clock on the specified date of the delinquent notice. Payments placed in the drop box before 7:00 AM will be processed before the final disconnection list is created. Customers who make their payment on the day of disconnection will have their names, will not have their names removed from the list and their water service will be disconnected. So whether they made it in the drop box at 8 o'clock in the evening or they came in the morning, that's the last thing that they do before they go to disconnect is process every last payment, but that's what's handed out to every one of the residents when they sign up for their service.
Excellent, thank you. Troy?
Well, if they're already got the notice and it, I mean, I'm not going to brag, but I've actually had my water shut off here before. So I know how that process works. I'm going to blame it on my wife since she's not here, but it is kind of embarrassing, but I mean, those things do happen and I paid my reconnect fee and I got it on late that afternoon, but I don't think I've had it done since, so I learned my lesson. I think you just pretty much read it out for us already. That's all I've got.
Brandy?
Just one thing and then I'm, I'm done. But it's like, I get the disconnect, disconnection fee if you're disconnected. I don't think it's appropriate to add the fee to somebody who is not disconnected. You're already paying that late fee, so they're paying that late fee, but I, to me, if you're not disconnected, you should not pay the disconnect fee. That's where I'm at.
But they will eventually be disconnected.
Well, not if they've come in.
No, they will. Once this, once the list gets sent out, we cannot call Public Works and tell them every time somebody comes in and pays their bill and say, don't disconnect it. It's a done deal. It's, the list is done, they disconnect them whether they've paid at 8 o'clock or not after they've, we've sent the list.
I'd, I just, I, I still just don't like it if, if they've paid, they've paid.
Ben?
So kind of what I'm getting is that we, what you're asking us to do is approve the policy that's already in place. You're not necessarily, we're not being asked if we like the policy per se. Would that be accurate?
Maybe I can help.
Yes.
I, for some reason, this ordinance isn't in my package, so I, I'm just going to go from memory. The, the problem was, we had not an ambiguity, we just didn't make, we, we used the term disconnect when we described how we could charge that $75. $75 was charged to actual disconnection. So we have this situation that Marlo's describing where people come in and pay after the fact. The one that really rankled that kind of brought this up was we have somebody that has a broken, what's it called?
Angle stop.
Angle stop. So we can't turn them off, they don't pay their bill, but we can't charge them the $75. So the suggestion was make the charge not necessarily tied to actual disconnection of water service. It's, and I can't remember the language, maybe somebody can help me, I don't have it in front of me. Did I send a red line up? What, what was the change?
It's not in my packet either.
It was a separate email that was sent yesterday.
Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry. I don't have it, so.
It.
I don't recall what I did, but.
Yeah.
But I put it into more generalized language which said, if you, if you make the list, you're, you're, you have to pay that regardless of whether you're actually disconnected, I think, language like that. So to answer your question, Ben, yes, you're right, that, that, we're not changing anything other than making it, taking the, the actual disconnection of water service out of the definition of how we make the charge, because that never really was what our intention was, but that's the way the ordinance read, so.
And I see, I, I do get that once the list is generated and the work orders are, are sent out, if I come in two minutes before they make it to my house and pay my bill, and I'm just going to use two minutes, I get 10 minutes, but because they're processing that payment and working through that, they're having to wait till I'm finished to make the phone call to Public Works to find out who's doing that disconnect, if I get disconnected even though 10 minutes before I paid my bill, would I still be charged a disconnect fee? Well, they performed the service because it was just that quick. So I can see, I, I can definitely see how there has to be a definitive time in which a, a non-payment fee is, or disconnect fee is applied. There has to be a set point because if Public Works is out there doing it as I'm making my payment and they disconnect it even though technically I, I paid it five minutes beforehand, if, if they're out there doing the work, I got to pay it. I, I should have to pay it. I mean, that, that's the part of it. So I guess the question is, is what are we, what's the definitive piece? It's, I guess the, the one thing I don't, the one thing I guess I don't like in what was said is that you have until 5:00 PM, but we'll actually really give you till 7:00 AM the next morning if you put it in the drop box. Like, what's the purpose of saying you have five, till 5:00 PM if really we'll give you options to drop it off till 7:00 AM? That's the only thing, that, that's the part that, I mean, however, I think it just could be clarified better, but I do agree that there has to be a definitive point because once something's created, it could be difficult.
So are you suggesting that any payments made after 5:00 PM should not be counted towards?
One or the other. It just, I think it has to be one or the other.
Because we had last night 80, 80 people on the list and then she came in and took all the payments that were made, credit card and whatever, so that dropped it down to 40.
Yeah, and I'm, it can be 7:00 AM, I just, whatever it is, it just needs to be consistent because if it says 5:00 PM in one spot and then 7:00 AM the next, in that same phrase, basically, I'm fine either way. I, like I said, for, for, for clarity of everything, I think it just needs to be specific as, you know, on, on the sixth day of business or whatever that, whatever that date is. Terry mentioned the calendar date specifically, I mean, you said she hasn't figured it out till 20, through 2025, so January 26th.
That's what the, the phone call states.
Yeah.
They get two phone calls stating you have till 5:00 PM blah, blah, blah day to pay or you will be subject to disconnect.
Yeah, and, and so January 22nd. If I come in at 7:00 AM on January 22nd and you, and payment hasn't been received, then you're getting a non-payment fee of $70. And maybe non-payment's the better way to put it at that point because I get, I, I get where people can say, well, I didn't get disconnected. Okay, but you've still, we've still gone through the promise, the process. I just want, I think speci- I just want, I think specificity, specificity? specificity? Doug, what's the word? Specificity? Specificity? Specificity should be very clear in that there, however it is. Because I do think, though, we can also get into the semantics of my disconnect happened at 10:05, but I made my payment at 10:03 and, but Public Works was already out there doing the job. So I would agree with some sort of definitive piece.
Brandy?
Yes, seeing what Terry pulled up, so I could see the red line piece, it's not specific on there. Or Troy, I'm sorry.
You're right.
It's not specific in there. So I would like to make a motion that we table this till next meeting and have some specifics.
Charles?
I'm not sure I want to second that. I, I think you're fairly specific on when that fee is assessed on them or you wouldn't have 40 people pay overnight, you know? And so evidently, they know exactly when this is due and exactly what their deadline is. There shouldn't be any, any question about it. If you have 40 out of 80 pay overnight, that pretty well indicates it's fairly specific or at least it's understood by them. And part of that possibly comes from the phone call? Because those are live phone calls, not robotic?
No, it's generated through our software.
Okay. But it still has the message on it.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm not gonna second it, yeah.
Do we, no one's buzzed in, so we have no second? Okay. So that, I guess, would fail to become a motion. So we still have a motion on the table. I mean, I'm just listening to everybody, but we lay charges, fees, I mean, there, there's a lot of legality around, around this. And our attorney said we're cleaning up a document here and, and in this, a little more documented correctly, I guess, if you will. I don't know if that's even the right word, just clear. So I don't have much to add on that, but Troy?
I really don't have anything to add. I understand Brandy's point and everybody's point. It sounds like to me we're already doing it, we're just trying to clear up the language a little bit. I mean, I would make a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance 1199-2024 and ordinance amending section 15-20, or 218 of the municipal, excuse me, code of city, man, I can't even read the day. The city of Park City, Kansas, related to connection, disconnection, and reconnection charges for customers served by the city water utility and reappealing the original of said section 1518.
And Ben?
Yeah, I'm gonna second that for discussion just real quick last time, I promise. My first question is, can we please be, get a definitive piece to either 5:00 PM or 7:00 AM and make sure that the software and the phone is updated? Because if, apparently that parts, they still understand that even though the phone call says 5:00 PM, they still know that they can pay till 7:00 AM. So I think just any sort of clarification would be great on that if we can, either way's fine. Sounds 7:00 AM's fine, too. At that. The second question, though, I had was actually related to the comment as to what brought this about, that there was a home that the T-valve or the? Angle stop doesn't work. So they're not paying their bill. And that's kind of where this came from. How does this guarantee they pay their bill?
It doesn't.
It just allows them to collect more fees.
Exactly.
But we can't do anything to do about it.
Not until the angle stop is fixed. So earlier tonight, I provided to you the city administrator's report update on the actual meter program. By the time it is all done and over with, we're gonna have replaced 4,000-plus meters in the city. Now, we have two crews from Schulte that come out and they're the ones that are replacing the meters themselves. But if they come across a pit and it's full of water, if it's full of mud, if it's got a broken angle stop, if there's any hiccup with that whatsoever, they walk away from it. They'll come back and replace the meters when we have had a chance to do it. Public Works, and I'm gonna give kudos to this, Gina had to go home, she wasn't feeling well, but for the last seven, eight months, we originally, we know what the staff is of Public Works and everything like that. We did not have a tremendous stack, deep bench with a whole bunch of people that were water and sewer smart. So we had a couple people that took it on and the first day they were doing two angle stops. We had over 600 to fix. So then all of a sudden, they've worked it up now and I think they're somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six angle stops a day. So they've gotten a lot better at it. And as it mentioned, we still have 500 installations to go. There's probably 200 or 300 of them that is still something to do on the backside that will require the city. So like Doug mentioned, in this particular case, it was a very unusual one because they didn't pay the bill, they should have had their water turned off, but because of the angle stop, it's not gonna be turned off until Public Works gets out there, fixes the angle stop, then we'll go turn it off. Now, that did make it to the top of the list and I believe that angle stop has been fixed. So when, I was a little bit callous when I said nothing's gonna prevent them from not paying their bills, but that was the particular situation. So it's an unusual situation, but that, sometimes things like that come up.
And if I understand correctly, we do generally offer one reconnect. Is it a one-time courtesy credit that we will sometimes give on disconnects for a first time offense? Or is that not?
If they sign it for advance?
If they sign it for?
ACH.
ACH. So we do have, we have a mechanism to waive that disconnect fee.
Yes.
And I do think, maybe it's semantics again, but I think maybe changing the name of that fee might be a little bit more beneficial to non-payment. Because then it's a little clearer that, hey, I didn't make my payment by the deadline, that's a true non-payment versus disconnect, which if they didn't. But that'd be my only two thoughts, four thoughts, eight thoughts, whatever they were.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're amending the municipal code, so this is a roll call vote.
Yes. Jim Schrader?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Ben Sauseta?
Aye.
Charles Swinkie?
Here, aye.
Terry Osborne?
Aye.
Troy Hill?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Charlie Davidson, he's not here.
That is a vote of six to one, so that passes. Thank you, everybody. Good discussion. Brings us up to item number nine, consider an ordinance amending sections 5-1001 and 5-1004 of the municipal code relating to fees or parade permits. Doug?
President and counsel, this is a little along the lines of what we've just been talking about, but we have in place some provisions in our parade ordinance as far as the permits and the fees, which really limit our ability to recoup all the costs that we incur. And you may realize that we actually have some pretty significant, non-city-sponsored parades that occur in our community or come through our community that require quite a bit of manpower, city manpower and city equipment. But more recently, it's required outside equipment and outside manpower. So what this, what these changes to two sections of that ordinance do is really expand what has been limited to just city equipment and city personnel to any personnel, any equipment necessary that these, these parades be conducted in a safe and orderly manner, protect the general welfare of our, of our community. So what the amendments do is, in the definition section, which is 5101, really just strike the language that restricts that to city personnel and city equipment and just allow us to charge if we have to bring in people from outside to help with law enforcement or Public Works. And also if we have to bring in equipment as far as closing streets, barricades, and those sorts of things. Then there is a, there is a provision in here which, which implies that when you apply for a parade permit, you may only have to pay a percentage of the costs that it, that the city incurs in, again, assuring that this is an orderly and, and safe operation. I've struck that. If you wish to leave it in there, that's fine, but it seemed to not make any sense that we would not want to get 100% of our costs for somebody that comes in and asks for a parade permit that we're not sponsoring. And again, let me, let me make the point that there is a provision in, in these ordinances that if it's a city-sponsored event, then, then the city bears all these costs, whether it's city personnel and others or, which would be our Fourth of July parade, for example. We don't, we don't make anybody pay for that, city pays for those. And there is also a provision in the existing ordinance that requires that, that the, the costs for personnel, for city personnel be set by the administrator with the assistance of the chief of police and that these be adopted by resolution. That's a, kind of a cumbersome operation for us. In fact, the existing levels for both Public Works and police really only reflect the salary, generally the average salary of police officers or Public Works people. That's not the cost that the city incurs when we have people go out and, and provide security or, or traffic control or put up barricades or clean up after these parades because there are benefits that add quite a bit to what a person's hourly salary is. And so this allows us to, a little more flexibility with the administrator and the chief of police to adjust these rates from time to time. And then, and then finally, there was a specific reference in here about traffic control that only it could be, it could only be commissioned law enforcement officers, which is a little restrictive because there are times when there may be some work, not specifically directing traffic, but something to do with the closing of streets and, and routing of traffic and that sort of thing that would involve Public Works personnel. And this allows, this, this makes that a more generalized description. Again, that's the, the idea here, which I've put under fiscal impact, is it's gonna raise the cost for people that, that, that apply for a parade permit to the extent that they, it's a big deal and it requires a lot of rerouting of traffic, closing of streets, a lot of cleanup, then, then these costs essentially are gonna go up because we're charging now 100%, no question of percentages. We're, we're including the ability to charge for any outside equipment or outside personnel. But the converse of that is that city's gonna come a lot closer to getting 100% of its costs recouped when it provides these services, which, again, are really necessary when a parade comes through the city in order to make sure it's orderly, safe, and not a detriment to the rest of the community and citizens.
Thank you for thinking through that, Doug. That was well explained, so. Open it up to questions and Charles?
Hey, I never did figure out by going through the papers here exactly what it would cost. Like, let's say you're gonna have a parade and it's gonna have 10 or 15 different items coming through and you need to have, you need to obviously have the police there to direct traffic and possibly Public Works to put up a couple of barricades, you know, to stop traffic. And what, what's the cost gonna be to somebody who wants to do a parade?
It's ad hoc. I mean, it's, it's a, they make an application, describe what they're gonna do. The chief of police makes an assessment of what traffic controls necessary, streets to be closed, traffic to be rerouted, for what period of time, how much personnel that's gonna require. It's on the weekend, is it gonna be, you know, overtime? Will there be equipment that has to be put out? And then what sort of cleanup after the fact as far as streets go and, and city property? So the answer is, Charles, it's ad hoc. And so with the, with the chief of police and the administrator, we provide them a fee that they have to pay. If they choose not to pay it, then they don't get a permit, so.
Okay, I was just looking for, there's no set fee, there's not a parade set fee?
There's an application fee and I, that's a pretty minimal, and I forgot what that was, $50? Yeah, $50.
Okay.
So this, but, but, but the permit fee could be substantial. It could be thousands of dollars.
Yeah, it could definitely mount to thousands of dollars.
And again, let me stress that what I consider to be the feel-good parades that we have in our community that we sponsor, we pay, we pay the tab.
Correct.
We're not, we're not making anybody pay for those things.
In a given year, how many parades do we have that would be non-city sponsored?
Three. Three.
Three?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't pay attention that we don't sponsor?
Yeah, that we don't sponsor.
Three. Significant, I think, in, in the personnel that we have to commit to make sure that these are conducted in a safe way.
All right, thank you.
Good. Troy? He asked my question. Okay, Ben?
Yeah, just for clarification purposes, then, as part of the fees associated with costs, the administrator and chief of police costs for assessing what is needed would not be included as part of the fees or would that be included as part of the fees?
The work that they do?
To plan it, yeah. To present it back.
I don't think we, no.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I just, just for clarification purposes, it'd be the?
That's kind of part of the job.
Yeah. It would be the fees, it would be the cost associated with the day of event, basically, or that.
Okay, I don't see any other discussion, so I would entertain a motion.
Wrong email.
Troy?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 1200-2024 and ordinance amending section 5-1001 and 5-10047 of the municipal code of the city of Park City, Kansas pertaining to fee charges in connection with the insurance of a?
Issuance.
Issuance of the parade permit and repealing the original of said sections.
Charles?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're amending an ordinance, so this also is a roll call vote. Harlow?
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
Terry Osborne?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Troy Hill?
Aye.
Ben Sauseta?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Charles Swinkie?
Aye.
That is a vote of seven zero, so that passes. Governing body remarks. George, let's start on your end.
Yeah. I wanted to thank Matty for her outstanding work as she did with the city. Also, this weekend, Saturday, is our Ball Fest, 4 to 6, at Hat McLean Park. Looking forward to seeing everybody come out. Thank you.
Ben?
I don't have anything.
Well, we had, again, today went through some, several million dollars worth of ordinances and, and things for the Park, Park City Center, right? And I just kind of wanted everybody to realize that that culminates a, you know, years and years of work that come down to just basically, it sounds like we rubber-stamped something like that, but something like that has years and years of work and thousands of thousands of hours put in by our, our staff. And so it's, it's, it's a lot of work went into something that ends very quickly. And just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. That might be out there in, in the TV land.
Pretty exciting time to be in, in Park City. I, we were on the news again yesterday about our senior center, so that's, that's just wonderful, a lot of good things going on. And the only thing I was gonna add is I think the, before we meet the next time, encourage everybody to get out and vote.
I just, I appreciate the first responders' proclamation and I just want to say and thank you for all our first responders. They, that's, they provide an awesome service. And it's, it's very well appreciated very much.
Troy?
I don't have anything other than make sure you go vote. Early voting starts soon. Exercise your rights, that's all I got.
Brandy?
And CCUA meets this Thursday, 4:30, Park City.
And CCUA meets this Thursday, four thirty, Park City Bel Air, or Park City Bel Air, and we're meeting in Bel Air City Hall.
That's right. Don't have anything else to add, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Ben?
Still moved.
And Terry?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Here.
I keep forgetting to vote. We are adjourned.